Okay, we are now live.
Okay, good evening and welcome to the July 6, 2020 meeting of the Town of Dover Planning Board. Today's meeting has been convened in accordance with the Governor's March 13, 2020, Executive Order Number 202.1, which suspends certain provisions of the open meeting law to allow municipal board to convene a meeting via video conferencing. In accordance with the executive order, the public has been provided with the ability to view the meeting and a transcript will be provided at a later date. I have confirmed that this meeting has been duly noticed. We fulfilled our legal notice requirements by posting notice at Town Hall and posting on the town's website. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Okay, first on the agenda, we have 3185 Route 22, Kazada. And we did get our consultants, that's good. So, we last discussed this meeting at the May 18 meeting, or this application at the May 18 meeting. We went over the latest revisions, we declared lead agency state, classified the act as unlisted and referred the application materials to the interested and involved agencies. So tonight, we're going to discuss the additional materials submitted by the applicant and the responses we received, and we are also going to begin the ARB process. So consultants, do you have applicants consultant, do you have a presentation?
So I'll just give you guys a brief recap, since I believe last one was in March that we went to. So, the applicants are proposing a combine or three new structures on an old site. The old site used to have a mixed-use restaurant dwelling unit structure on it. That down in 2018, so now the proposed use calls a 6,100 square foot mixed-use restaurant and commercial structure toward the side of the project site and 224, 480 square feet residential structures towards the western side. The commercial structure will contain a 1,700 plus or minus square foot restaurant and 4,300 square feet of commercial space. The two residences will contain a total of eight dwelling units, five one-bedroom and three two-bedroom. Since then, we had had discussions on parking books and location of parking areas and all those things, we had since received a determination from the code enforcement officer saying that it was all good. And then, other than that, the only things we have submitted since our previous submission was a script for the site and all revised stormwater and grading plans. I believe Joe has had a chance to review those. Being that it doesn't appear that there are any further comment proposed layout or any of that nature, we would like to push for a public hearing for the proposed project for as for the upcoming meeting. Other than that, nothing really has changed, and so we'd like to bring the board for their comments.
Okay. Um, Aaron?
I'll start, I'll just bring up my memo from that I just sent around last week. Give me a second, I'll share my screen here. Everybody see that?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, so the site plan looks good, we, I didn't really have any additional comments from the last meeting. The only thing I noted was that there was a comment, a very minor comment, number two in my memo about the square footage just being accurately shown. I don't think that was revised yet, but it was from the April meeting I brought it up, that we should be showing two, two-story 4,900 square foot residence for each of the residential buildings because the total floor area is 9,920 square feet, just to clarify on the plan. We received feedback from the county on the 239M referral. They considered the project a matter of local concern, but they did ask for additional landscaping between the commercial parking lot and the neighboring property of the south. I think there was adequate screening shown, but if the board has any additional input on what they should add, feel free to chime in there. Other than that, I just wanted to bring up the response we also got from the DC on the referral, which was just about the timber rattlesnake. We did have a discussion about this last time we met on the project. Seems to be the consensus of the board that there really shouldn't be an issue here with the snakes. It's on the location and the nature of the property and the previous development. So, but we did get two letters, one from the National, from the New York Heritage Program, another from the DC's Division of Permits when they reviewed the application. Both saying the same thing, they're, you know, noting that there's a potential for the snakes here, so I just think just to close the loop on this, we should have the EAF supplemental narrative that they already prepared. I think the latest version was from March, just update that again to, just to add like a species or timber rattlesnake section and just elaborate on why we don't believe there's any issues here with that species.
Okay.
Otherwise, I noted, yes, the ARB can start reviewing because we do have a full set of plans now on the elevations. And I also, I defer to Joe on his comments on the SWIP and stormwater and ESC, which he did provide in a separate memo.
Okay, thank you, Aaron. Um, Joe, did you want to go over your comments at all?
Sure. I reviewed both the new grading plan, erosion control, as well as the SWIP, and actually I have comments. The grading plan is in good shape and the SWIP meets all the conditions that the state requires for stormwater pollution. Treatment and the detention has been provided as required. I'm fine with this.
Did you want to mention that the retaining wall should be added and also that we did receive approval of the septic?
The onsite wastewater treatment needs to and has been approved by the Health Department. And the retaining walls are shown on the north property line will need to be designed and shown. Typically, that's done at the building permit stage. So whether the applicant wants to present that design for site plan condition that the retaining walls be designed, be shown with the building plans at the time of building permit, I'm okay with either. Very typical for the retaining walls to be designed as part of the building process, which we would review with the building inspector at that time.
Okay.
Did we actually receive approval of the septic, or was that the other project on the agenda tonight?
Well, the other, the Gulf, I believe there don't have written approvals from the Health Department, in a sense, we have to do seeker first, but that department has given consent to it, so.
We actually have an approval from Department of Health for this Kazada application, right?
There was a letter June 16th to Route 22 Realty.
That's the main.
The other project.
We do not have. We do not have Kazada Health Department approval yet.
No, you do have. Three C concepts, they're just seeker, correct?
We were waiting to get through seeker so we could then submit it to them.
Okay.
Unlike the other application, that was an existing building, so they allowed a design for that to move forward.
Okay, I'm going to move this over then. It's very confusing because they both just keep referring to them by a number on Route 22.
Correct. So we memoed. Or approval, which once we get seeker done, Health Department could take action on it.
Okay. All right. Um, we already did the sidewalk. We want to go ahead and is there any discussion by any members of the board, first of all? We should probably just make some kind of comment on the landscaping that we agree with Aaron's consideration that the landscaping is sufficient? Or do we want to add more landscaping?
I'm going to pull up the plan from the, I think the April set. That'll help.
So if you take a look at that plan, we have red maples, some evergreens and summer wines, all planted along that in-question border. So, yeah, so I would say it's sufficient, but yeah.
I think Pete, Pete's not here tonight, but I believe he already weighed in on the species and made some minor adjustments.
Yes, I remember that.
Yep. Change the.
Here's the landscaping plan from the last set. Is this the one you want to show, Peter, or should I show the site plan?
Uh, no, this one works.
Okay.
Yeah, that's all part of the site plan set.
Yeah, I do remember Pete did comment on the species and was okay with this layout.
Yeah, I think that, I think if there was anything that needed to be added, I think Pete would have said so, when he commented on the species.
Is existing shown on this too?
You have some, there's an existing tree line. It's noted by that dotted line towards the, your left.
Okay.
Yep, but other than that, probably from where in that portion, we'll probably remove any vegetation on our side of the site.
Okay. Is there any kind of, just move it up a little so we can see the lawn and so forth. I'm just wondering if they've given any thought to how long we might be stuck, where we are stuck, and what might happen in the future. Is there any kind of way to put picnic tables or something on that lawn? To have outdoor dining or?
Oh, for, are you, are you talking about towards the septic field in the northern part?
I think she's talking about here.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just trying to think of, no, I was thinking like there. I was just trying to think of in the future, you know, I don't know, I can't remember where the doors are back here. If you could, how easy it would be to service that, but it looks like, oh, I can't move it over.
Are we talking about for the commercial, for the restaurant?
It looks like there's not a lot of room on the sidewalk here for tables. I was just thinking, depending on how long we're stuck in this COVID situation of not being able to have indoor dining or not being comfortable with indoor dining. If there is an, I mean, now that it's in the planning phase, if we could at least think ahead and envision where you might put some outdoor dining tables.
There is, Val, there is outdoor dining in the front of the restaurant along Route 22? That is, that, that's part of what's being requested here to have an outdoor patio.
Oh, okay, so how many ta, it doesn't look very big, but maybe that's just the scale of the plan.
Yeah, there's, there's a portion that would be under the roof, and then there's a portion that's just a, the concrete patio.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you see that the glass there, that, that glass is meant to open up so that they can put tables in the front there.
Yeah, I think this was brought up at the last meeting too, because Victoria posed this question, right? And, yeah, so this, this, on the east facade here, these doors are meant to open up completely, so there's kind of a outdoor indoor open air situation here.
Oh, okay. All right, so then, do we want to, we, we def, we're going to go over the ARB, so maybe leave those drawings up there, but let's go ahead and set the public hearing first.
I'm actually going to pull up the more recent elevations of the descent, the complete set.
Let's get my calendar open here. Do we need to have any revisions in time for the public hearing?
I would say that the stuff that is being requested is pretty minor and it won't really affect the, the actual layout of the site, more like notes and, and leaders and such like that.
You could have it ready for the 20th if we wanted to do it.
Yeah, that should, that shouldn't be any problem.
Okay.
Because that would put us July 20th, right?
Pardon?
That would put the July 20th public hearing, right?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, that shouldn't be a problem at all.
Okay, I'll make a motion then to hold the public hearing on the 20th, could we have a second?
Second.
Tomorrow. The secretary will poll the members.
Al?
Yes.
Mar?
Yes.
Ryan? Henry?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Yeah, that's it, there's five members.
Did you get everyone?
Yes, I did.
Okay, sorry. So, the public hearing is set then, and we'll just have to get the notices out and the signs.
That'll, that'll all be set to go out this week.
Okay, thank you very much.
And sorry, just Lisa, would you want me to come swing by and pick up those signs?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, we'll, we'll work out a time when I can swing by.
Okay.
Okay, with respect to the ARB review, compatibility refers to scale, massing, height, building materials, building proportions, window arrangements, and proportions, roof design.
Right. Come on, get out of the way. Sorry.
Do we have a little photo bomb there? Architectural elements, architectural style and other architectural elements being harmonious with existing buildings on adjoining properties and in the surrounding neighborhood, and in general with buildings typically built in rural New York towns and villages before 1950. The building form guidelines are those published in the October 1994 edition of the New York Planning Federation Rural Guidelines. So first of all, Chapter 37, and we have a checklist for Chapter 37 of the zoning code. Compatibility of the proposed change to an existing building. Well, this is a new building, so we'll skip that one. Compatibility of a new building with neighboring buildings. And with respect to roof structure, chimneys, dividing walls, fences and lighting. Does anyone have any comments on these?
Just from the drawings, it looks like that compatibility is not an issue.
Right. Yes, I agree, it looks very compatible and it also looks very compatible with the look of the building that was there before. Proper screening from view of mechanical equipment, loading dock and waste storage facilities. Um, let's see, I guess the waste, the dumpsters and so forth, that would be on the plan, I don't see any.
Yeah, everything is in the rear here.
Yeah, okay.
Not showing in the elevations.
Is it screened from view from the apartments?
Yeah, so they, the, yeah, so the apartments will be facing inward and that retaining wall should also help screen it. Plus, there will be an enclosure around it.
Oh, okay. All right. Um, then we have, does anyone have any other comments? Okay, with respect to the Chapter 145 checklist, this is dealing with structures visible from the public roads. So it's really no different than what we discussed on the Chapter 37, since everything is visible from the public roads. The structures are compatible with each other and with traditional structures in the surrounding area. We don't have flat roofs, large expanses. Well, there is large expansive undifferentiated facades on the one side. And that was coming, if you were coming south down 22, that one facade, and then, and what is the landscaping there again?
So, that is actually against the existing drive that will be there. So we wouldn't want any windows or anything like that on that portion of the structure because of how close it would be to existing access, that's why it's proposed like that. It'd be broken up because it wouldn't just be just a facade, it would go in and out to accommodate the, the layout of the building.
And then, as you come down the highway, you would see the front at the same time.
Exactly, just because.
Yeah, that's true.
By the time you would get to the point where you can see that side portion of the structure, you'd already be moving along the front half.
Okay. Okay, and then we don't, there's no trademarked architecture identifying a specific company. This isn't a franchise or anything. Go ahead, sorry.
Sorry, yeah, no, this has been designed by Vantland Architects. Just a, not a franchise company at all, so.
Impacts on historic and cultural resources shall be minimized. And again, you know, this is a historic hamlet and we do have several historic buildings in it, which is why we do appreciate having a design that's adaptable and harmonious with that time period. So we're not making any decision tonight because we have to finish seeker first, but we did want to get the review over with. Does anyone on the board have any other comments about the architectural review? Okay. You are free to go.
Awesome.
Well, except not really, because you have another application later on in the meeting.
Nope, you said it, we're free to go.
Moving on to Stony Brook Estates, we previously approved this application in December of 2007 and various extensions have been granted, the last of which expired 21 May 2020. So accordingly, we conducted a review to determine whether reapproval was appropriate. And at the last meeting, we held a public hearing. There were no public comments and we held it open an additional 10 days at which, for written comments, at which time none were received. So seeing that there was no discussion and no comments received, we are going to go ahead and we have a resolution to re-grant site plan and special permit approval. Has everyone had a chance to take a look at this?
Yes.
Going to share it in case they didn't. Patrick, this is the copy that Victoria sent around this morning.
Yes.
Okay. Yes, it is quite long because there are so many whereas clauses that just summarize all of our prior reviews that we conducted. Okay, and then I'll read the final part. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby reaffirms its determination of significance, a negative declaration originally issued on December 4, 2007, finding that the project will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts and that a draft environmental impact statement will not be prepared. Be it further resolved that the planning board hereby re-grants site plan and special permit approval to the multifamily 28-unit condominium development known as Stony Brook Estates. As depicted on the map set entitled Stony Brook Estates, prepared by Michael J. Bazinski PE, last revised November 5, 2009, subject to the following conditions. Payment of all fees and escrow. Evidence that DOT work permit has been extended through 2020. Resolved. Is someone saying something? Be it further resolved that it is the applicant's responsibility to ensure that all agency permits and approvals, including but not limited to conceptual DOT approval, DOH approval and SWPPP approval remain valid and in effect and no building permit shall be issued for any improvements on site until the applicant has provided the building inspector with valid copies of all required approvals and permits. Be it further resolved that the following conditions shall be met prior to the issuance of any certificates of occupancy for the residential units. One, all disturbed areas shall be graded, seated and/or stabilized and mulched to the satisfaction of the planning board engineer and in accordance with the erosion and sediment control permit. Two, proof of approval or no action letter from the Attorney General's Office, the Declaration of Condominium Bylaws and Rules and Regulations. I make a motion that we approve.
Val?
Hi.
Ryan? Kamar?
Hi.
Bill?
Hi.
Henry?
Hi.
Hey, that's everyone.
Okay. The resolution is passed. But we'll see you next. But we'll see you next month for the other extension. Pardon?
An erosion control permit, just again to extend.
Right, right. We'll put that on the next agenda.
Alright guys, well, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Have a great week.
You too.
I'm allowed to leave. Have a good night.
You are good to go.
Alright.
Next, we have new business. This is an application. For a miniature golf at the ice cream. Ice cream parlor on Route twenty-two. And do we have a presentation?
Uh, yes, so. Hi again, Peter Sander from Anya Engineering, representing the applicant. So allow me to just give you guys a little background on the site. So the parcel is a one point five acre parcel. It's located within the Hamlet Mixed Use Zoning District within Dover Plains Hamlet downtown. Currently, the site maintains several existing uses. One being the primary structure, which is a multifamily residence. It also supports an ice cream parlor. A, and a commissioner or a commissary for the food truck, which is also located on the southern end of the site. It's also worth noting on the, about the site is that there is an existing west or wetland to the eastern portion of the project site. It's a DC wetland. We've had it delineated and we've attached the hundred foot wetland buffer on it. We've worked our, we've worked to keep all the proposed improvements out of the belt or buffer seems, but um. So I'm gonna get into what we're proposing. As part of our proposed project, we. Submitted the project is a minor project under the recreational use. Which requires a special use permit within the Hamlet Mixed Use Zoning District. Proposed as part of the project is an eighteen hole miniature golf course, which will contain a variety of holes and. Landscaping improvements. It will also have a mix between gravel and concrete walking paths. That way that people can walk around the site, go to each hole. Will also have a ninety-three point five square foot starter house. That's where you'll store all your, your golf clubs, golf balls and scorecards all the winter. We're also including a perimeter fence, which will contain the project site and, and the proposed use. Included as part of this application is a formalized parking area. As well as additional paving to support the proposed use. Just to kind of walk through some of the, I guess we'll open it up for some of the consulting comments, but. On that, it's a fairly straightforward project. I think we have a little discussion, so with, move it forward to you or pass it back to you.
Okay, thank you. I guess tonight we're going to go ahead and review the memo from our planner. How comments from the board will set escrow and set a sidewalk. For starters.
So, just on the wetland buffer, I have the plan up here. I just wanted to. Note that it's, it seems like it kind of ends. Here on the planet, is there a way that you can maybe for the future version, show the entire extent of it?
So we actually do have, it just kind of disappears a little bit. It's that dashed line. So you can see where it says New York State DC a hundred foot wetland buffer. That line, yes, correct. If you follow that line, we have the edge proposed right up to that, that line, but not within it. And so we just kind of continue that or that way, I'll kind of buffer. So we don't have anything proposed within it. The disturbance area that's shown, that was more kind of the show. We don't anticipate that there will be any disturbance within that and we can bring that back in. Because they are just golf courses. It doesn't require significant heavy machinery or anything like that. We just wanted to show that we've fully marked out the limit of disturbance. So we don't anticipate any disturbance within that buffer as either, so.
Right, and the delineation was done. It looks like there's notes on the plan. It was Mike Newicki, Ecological Solutions from last year.
Right, yep.
So, you know, we'll send this, this is gonna be going to DC anyway, as an involved agency, so we'll see if they have any additional comment. On the proximity. And it ties into the secret process. So that's pretty much what my memo says. We're gonna wait to see what they say on that. I'm gonna pull up other comments here. The flood plan is, is not, also not being impacted at all, correct?
Correct, yep.
So my first section of the memo just goes over just some administrative. Application notes and involved agency notes. So I had this as, based on just what the code says about disturbance, I. My interpretation was it's a major project, just based on the square footage of new improvements. Ten thousand square feet of land, alteration in active use of ten thousand square feet of land with or without structures. It sounds like you wanted, your submission was assuming a minor project special permit, but it seems based on the code that. We can't ignore that it's, meets the definition of a major project.
So the way that we, oh, sorry, continue.
No, I just, if the board wanted, if the board's able to weigh in and maybe, you know, waive that or discuss it further. I just wanted to point it out.
Well, the, so just to give you a little background as to how we were interpreting it, it came in because you noted it was E. And the minor project definition, and it says alteration in active use of ten thousand square feet of land with or without structures. The, the proposed miniature golf portion of the project is only about. Hundred square feet. So that's how we gained our determination. For that, because the play area for the mini golf course doesn't actually exceed. The ten thousand square feet and that would be the new use, but.
What was the number that you said? It kind of faded out, I'm sorry.
Sorry, we have the proposed play area being seventy-one hundred square feet. Which that would have put us under the ten thousand square foot. Square feet of land for proposed and new use. So that's, that's how we were interpreting it as a minor project.
But you're still, overall disturbance is point four three acres, which is noted in the EAF and the application.
So yeah, that's just, I guess, how we interpret differently, just as the alteration and active use. We didn't, I didn't really consider the disturbance being part of the proposed active use, just kind of as the. As part of the proposed project, that's what's gonna be disturbed, but the ten thousand square feet of new earth. That it would have to exceed, it doesn't. So that's my interpretation. Again. We'll leave it up to the board as different interpretations, but.
Does anyone wanna weigh in on that?
I think that. When we, I think that. At one point, we were saying that we were only gonna put the major projects up on the website. And now we're saying that we're putting them all up on the website. So I don't know as it's. As critical to differentiate now. But I'm not.
Just for the, our process through the planning board, the major project requires additional information. Which may match the special use criteria, again, or special use. So again, just kind of did refer to the board on this one.
So the seventy-one hundred square feet that was mentioned as the play area, that would basically be like. The footprint of the finished miniature golf area, but more than that would have to be disturbed in order to put it in. Is that what you're saying?
So the, I'm just saying that the proposed use of the miniature golf holes as well as the walking path, concrete and gravel. Comes up to seventy-one hun, or seventy-one hundred square feet. And that's, that's how I interpreted it as it being below the ten thousand square feet.
But then you have your parking lot too.
Right, so again, those areas are pretty much used as parking already. That's why it's not so much as much of a change of use as the, the miniature golf course is.
An interpretation issue, really. I mean alteration, it's tricky. Patrick, do you have any thoughts on this?
It's referring, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I wasn't lighting up. It's referring to both alteration and active use. So I think that alteration applies more broadly to things that could include paving disturbance, et cetera. As well as the active use, which would be seventy-one hundred square feet.
Okay.
Yeah, so I think cumulatively, it kind of meets the definition of. So, major project.
If this is an issue, we can always apply for an interpretation, but.
Again, I, it's just more of how I interpret it, so I take no exception to how the board will rule on this one.
Okay.
So that's, you know, I was just noting that, you know, appropriate fees and et cetera should be factored into all these, these nuances here. Cause I don't think, I'm not sure what was collected to date, but I don't think the major application fee was collected and. Or the special permit, but I defer to Lisa on that. We could, and you know, something that we can revisit after this. To make sure everything squared away.
Yeah.
Okay, so I did pose the question about. Chapter sixty-five's applicability and I think Joe's memo touched on that. Doesn't seem like a SWIP is required, but chapter sixty-five erosion sediment control may be, right Joe?
Correct. Depending on Peter, how much volume you're gonna serve it, you're under the half an acre threshold, but there's also two hundred yard threshold. So it, there wasn't information on the plan, how much yardage you may be. Moving, cutting and filling. So I defer to you. You pretty much have everything on there already. For erosion control as needed for chapter sixty-five, other than checking the boxes, chapter sixty-five. But if you're under two hundred yards, that's something you can let us know next time.
Okay.
And similarly on the DOT, Joe, highway work permit.
On the DOT, on the DOT, Peter, you show paving and striping within the right of way. So that would, that would indicate that you would have to go to DOT for a permit approval. However, if you want to modify your plan, that's your call, so that no work is proposed within the right of way, that may alter your need to go to them.
Okay.
That's right here.
And some striping as well.
Yeah, within, with. Yeah, we'll definitely be modifying the plan to not include that.
I, I asked my memo to just pointed that out for you to make that decision, which way you want to go.
Thanks.
Yep, thanks Joe.
Okay. So moving on. Some notes about involved agencies. So we have Department of Health DC. DOT. Just for proximity. As the fire department been, have you met with them yet or you plan to?
Uh, we haven't met with them yet. Again, we weren't changing too much on the circulation of site, but it might be best to meet with them prior.
I think it would make sense to get feedback on the, you know, as you're adding some recreation use here.
Well, I mean, the, the mini golf course itself is just gonna be flat and no changes to really to the existing building. So that's why we don't really fully think that we should, we should be meeting with them just because of the nature of the work proposed.
But for, you know, any kind of emergency that comes up. With guests on the course, you don't think that's an issue for them to look into?
I, I don't think there'll be any gases or any of that on the course, just some mini golf balls and clubs.
Alright, well, we have, I, I recommend that they be involved agency. If you want to push back on that. In writing, that's fine. If the board has any other opinions on that.
I'll also note that our resolution as drafted lists them as an interested or involved agency.
I mean, we can send on the plans.
I think they should be an involved agency because.
They can weigh in on it.
Yeah, I, I would say that i- if you want to send them to, to the, the fire department, we don't have an issue of it on it. We just didn't think that this project rise to the level of having or needing our office to go meet with them beforehand. To get special input before we did any kind of design. And we, we historically do that on projects that are much more complicated. So we didn't approach them first as we do many times, but that was the reason why, because it just, it didn't seem to be with only one small building there. But we don't have an issue if you wanted to circulate it to them.
Yeah, it does be circulate to the fire department.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, alright, and under the site plan itself, just looking at the required information. If you want to elaborate on some of these, the lighting plan, does any, are you gonna do any. Lighting improvements, obviously. Is it gonna be a nighttime course or you're gonna have certain hours?
Uh, my assumption is that we'll be operating under the current ice cream parlor use. So far, the site pretty much provides adequate lighting for that use. And at, being that it's seasonal in nature, long summers. I don't think that it's gonna require much lighting, but we'll work with the applicant to see what we think. Other improvements that might be necessary on that.
Sure, okay.
Peter, you said there's gonna be split rail fencing all around the entire, enclosed around the entire thing?
Right, so we have the fencing shown as that X line type. It's the straight line with the X's going through it. Yep, so yeah, we were anticipating split rail fencing.
Okay, I noticed a lot of places have like some type of screened. Area around, a lot of the golf courses have screened fencing. It's gonna be a little different.
I'm not sure what type of screen, are you talking like a more of a visual screening?
Yeah, like a privacy, almost like the, the privacy fence.
Okay, so yeah, we weren't anticipating any mesh type.
Right.
Uh, yeah, we weren't anticipating any type mesh type screening, just a split rail fence, it kind of. Really show where the course is going.
Okay.
Well, we can look into it.
Existing privacy fence to remain, that's noted here. That's just next to the residential building, right?
Yeah, that's, yeah, there, as you can see, there's a porch, that existing privacy fence is underneath it. So that, the residences, yes. So that, that will be disturbed.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Um, and then I just noted, you know, the erosion sentiment control, Joe seemed to weigh in already on that. And a grading plan, is that also forthcoming?
Uh, so we weren't really anticipating any grading going to be necessary. If there is, it will be just shown on that, the site plan as well. But again, the whole area is pretty much flat level. We don't really anticipate any grading required for the, the construction of the bell holes.
Yeah, I imagine you're, some surface moving around to make it more. Flat, that's why you're probably gonna be under your two hundred yards, right?
Right, eh, correct.
Great. Yeah, comment number twelve is just to, to meet the code requirement for special permit. I didn't see the supplemental narrative that's called out under eighty-three in the code for describing. How the use will satisfy the criteria set forth in the code and. It's gonna be coming.
Right, yeah, so we'll provide that. Again, this is more of a preliminary discussion. So just to see if we needed to make any major alterations to the site plan. We'll address how the, the site will be used in subsequent submissions.
And then on the parking, you know, I, it's subject to interpretation, obviously, but I just wanted to know if you have a source for your one space per thousand square feet. That you've calculated.
So we actually have, it's two spaces per thousand square feet. Because the.
Oh, is it two?
Yeah, it's two. Yeah, no worries. Because there is nothing. Similar to this within our zoning code. Yeah, cause we have the times two space.
My fault, okay. And that's actually consistent with what I've seen, actually. Like the ULI manual shared parking has two per thousand, so you're actually fine. And that's actually consistent with what I've seen, actually, um, like the U L I manual shared parking has two per thousand, so you're actually fine.
Okay, perfect, yeah, so we, we just looked in, uh, zoning codes. That have similar uses and laid it out, and that's where we, we got our parking counts for on that one.
Yeah, that was just. A typo on my end before the holiday weekend.
It happens.
Okay, uh, fourteen is just summarizing what the plan, this code says about wetlands, we discussed that D E C is gonna see this, and we'll go from, from there. For secret purposes.
On the wetland, if I go way in on the wetland, I would suggest, Peter, that you remove. Or move that limited, just a limited disturbance silt fence to be on or inside the wetland before we send this off to D E C.
Right.
I know your intent was not to disturb, but if you send this plan to D E C under circulation, you're gonna get a comment that you need a permit.
Right, so yeah, we're, we were not, that, that is strictly more to show the limited disturbance again. Our, our disturbance stops at that fence, which is all within. And our revised plan's gonna move that limited disturbance to match that fence line, I just overlap a little.
Well, what you could do is, I'm sure you guys could be creative, you could show a symbol that will include limited disturbance. Your silt fence will probably go right where your poster rail fence will go later on.
Right.
You'll come up with some creative way to show one line that.
One line stacked on top of the other.
No, no, just one line is for all three purposes.
Right.
You'll come up with something, you're good at that, but I think better off doing that than. Moving it out for, uh, illustrative purposes. You will end up with the permit that you tended to get.
Right, so yeah, what our revised submission will, will fix, well, we will not show that within.
I don't think, I, I'm not gonna need an extra, you know, a separate drawing for just a silt fence, so I think you could be creative on this. To let us know that line indicates different things during different times in the project.
Gotcha, yep, we will explore the, on our drafting end and figure out how best to show that.
Okay.
Thanks, Joe. Um, yeah, then just, so we're, we are shooting, this is unlisted, coordinated, we have a resolution to declare lead agency and set that. Um, tonight. Just looking for, if, if you want to, just to beef up the E A F a little bit, I think it's good to. Just specify the seasonal nature, the hours of operation, this is gonna be a public hearing, so more information, the better. That's what sixteen is showing. Um, and in line with that seventeen was just a question for me, from me about, you know, maybe the, the age of construction of that residential use that's there right now. I assume it looks pretty new, the windows look pretty new, I assume it's fine, um, but again, the, just in case it comes up. To make sure that there's adequate, uh, glazing on those residential windows, so that if they want to keep their windows closed, if, when they're conditioning on, they're not gonna hear. Folks playing golf and yelling and whatever.
Right.
Happening. That's really the gist of seventeen, so if you could provide anything, it would help, just to make that argument that it's not an issue. Um, sometimes the applicant. Owner of the property might have some information on when, if rehab was done, or any new improvements to the structure, the date, and, you know.
Right.
Approximately windows.
I'll talk to the applicant, see what sort of, uh, what sort of provisions were already provided. Uh, but again, it's currently already a mixed use site, so residents within there already experience it, so, but again, I'll, I will talk to the applicant about and see what information we could provide.
Yeah, I get that there's the ice cream parlor, there's already crowds there, but you're adding on to that now, so.
Right, yep.
That's all this is about. Eighteen and nineteen are just tied to, uh, D E C is gonna weigh in on species, I think we might end up with a similar. Discussion of rattlesnake, if that's the, indeed, species in question here. It's on the other side of the highway. Um, from the other project we discussed, and most likely not a problem. Um, I don't know if bog turtles or something that is gonna be flagged, we'll see what they come back with. Cuz they are, you know, they are gonna submit a comment letter just because. They're involved agency, so they'll, they'll know wetlands, and they probably will know species too.
Yeah, I believe it was just the rattlesnakes, so again, if, when we're providing a supplemental info, we'll also include a, an aspect of it that addresses. That the site wouldn't be, uh, wouldn't, we wouldn't have to worry too much about rattlesnakes, so similar to how we'll see the, the other project.
Yeah, that's all I had in this memo, in the preliminary site plan.
Okay, does anyone, uh, on the board have a comment? Not yet, we need to set our escrow.
Did Victoria give you a approximate number, Patrick?
Uh, she did not, but this seems like a relatively minor application as far as commercial applications go. So, I'm not sure, I'd, I'd defer to your judgment.
What's been collected so far on, on the escrow?
The initial escrow of one thousand dollars has been collected.
Um, Joe, you think. Another thousand or fifteen hundred would cover this?
They know the thousand you should cover.
So it increases about, right?
Increase the total to two thousand.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we increase the escrow to two thousand, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Love the secretary.
Who made second vow, who seconded motion?
Phil.
Their screen isn't big enough.
Thanks, Bill. Bow.
Aye.
Tomorrow.
Aye.
Henry.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
Ryan.
Is Ryan still here? Oh, I don't think he's here, oh, he's here.
I think he's muted.
Yeah, Ryan, can you hear us? He's just got his picture up there, so he must not be here anymore.
I can hear you, I've heard you the whole time, I keep saying I.
Hi, thank you.
Okay. So. And now we have to set a site lock.
All right. Um, we're open for all times, so. Defer to you guys on this one.
Um, Saturdays are generally not good for me currently, so, you know, it could, if it's a weekend, Sunday would be preferred, or anytime during the week. I can make it over there.
Okay, well, during the week, you know, now it's pretty much light after work, so maybe we could do it during the week. If we did it. What about Thursday, the sixteenth?
Okay with me.
Yep, we're okay with that.
Um, there's a, uh, a webinar at six P M. that evening. For, uh, board members.
That's correct.
Okay, so, uh, let's see, Wednesday I have a webinar, uh. How about Tuesday, the fourteenth?
Okay with me.
Yep.
Yeah, that works.
So.
Like five o'clock, six o'clock?
Six is better for me.
Okay. So six o'clock on the fourteenth.
Okay.
And we'll send around a reminder tomorrow. Or the next day.
All right. Um, quick question, is now the appropriate, appropriate time to discuss application fees, cuz I know we had some. I guess discrepancy on that one. Uh, so, or should it, this some, be something we work out, uh, off, off the Zoom?
Yeah, I think you can do it off Zoom, just get together with Lisa and go over the fee schedule.
What, so, I just had a quick question then, uh, because it said that. Cuz I received an email saying that separate application fees would be required for, uh, special permit and major project permit. Based off how the Dover fee schedule wa- lays out, it really only requires one escrow, or one escrow fee and one application fee. With the application fee, the, or site plan and special permit approval, there's no separate one for special permit and site plan?
Okay, I thought that the, uh. I thought that the change was brought about not by it being two different applications, but rather by it going from minor to major.
Okay, all right, so then it would just be an increase from the initial fee of four seventy-five plus. Uh, that building, and bringing that up to the five seventy-five plus the one ten per acre development, so whatever the difference between. The minor project and the major project, and not a completely separate fee altogether.
That's, that was my understanding, sound right, Aaron and Patrick?
Yes, that's my reading of it as well.
Okay.
I mean, we, we can have this discussion offline to cement the fees.
Yeah, of course, yeah, I just wanted to just address it, uh, I, I was getting some discrepancy, so I just wanted to work it out.
Oh, good to have clarification.
Awesome.
On then, we also have a resolution to classify the action and declare intent to serve as lead agency.
I'm gonna pull that up, hang on. I think someone's TV is coming through the sound.
Yeah, I don't know who's it is, it's not mine.
Someone was watching Family Guy.
Can we mute everybody here? If you're not gonna talk, mute.
More of an American.
There, I think it went away, okay, hang on. Uh, resolution. There it is.
So who are we saying we were circulating it to?
So we've got D C, DOT, Health Department, and Fire Department.
Okay. All righty then, now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby classifies the action as an unlisted seeker action. Declares its intent to serve as lead agency in a coordinated review of the project. And directs its secretary to send notice of the board's intent to all interested and involved agencies. I make a motion that we accept this resolution. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, tomorrow, and the secretary will hold the members.
Al.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
Tomorrow.
Aye.
Henry.
Aye.
I don't think Ryan's here now. I don't see him on the screen anymore.
So I was wondering if I could get the changes to the site plan, um, in particular with the, um, silt fence and limit of disturbance. Uh, prior before the next meeting, is it possible to have this circulated, uh, throughout the agencies, because again, I don't think it'll change too much. It's just some minor modifications to that.
I think this resolution is saying that we're gonna refer it as it is currently.
Okay, gotcha.
But if you, if Joe did say that it, he recommended. Clarifying some of the wetland stuff.
I, I, I would suggest not, so, if you get that one thing trained for circulation, you're gonna save yourself a letter from the D E C.
Right, so I think what we would wanna do is just quickly modify that and get some revised plans. Uh, just for that sort of, that circulation, just so we do clarify with the D E C.
Al, also the DOT, since it's circulating the DOT, if you're to remove from the right of way, that should be clarified as well. Otherwise, you'll be addressing that issue as well.
So, how fast do you think you can turn that around?
Uh, as fast as you guys need it.
By eight o'clock in the morning?
Twelve hours, that's more than enough time.
Yeah, it's only like eleven hours work, you don't.
Yeah, easy.
Sleep is underrated.
Anytime we sleep at the office tomorrow.
Exactly.
Oh, is that there? Going to circulate to the county for the G M L two thirty-nine.
That's kind of going to be up to the board's discretion here, uh, my review of the application showed that. Uh, there's some information that the county typically wants to receive before it makes a two thirty-nine M refer, or a decision under two thirty-nine M, specifically lighting. Um, so i- if we feel like the lighting is adequately reflected in the current plan, we can send it. To them, but you, of course, risk the, uh, chance that they'll just send it back and say, we want more information. But, of course, if they do that, we'll be on the same timeline as if we didn't do it tonight anyway.
Yeah, so I feel like that is, that's a reasonable, that one. Um, if we were to circulate it to them.
Makes sense.
Okay, that would be a, a separate motion that we can do, uh, separate from the resolution.
From the resolution we just did, so we wanna do a separate res- uh, separate motion to approve. It to be circulated for two thirty-nine M to the county.
Uh, yes, but before we do that, um, a minor procedural thing, uh, did we actually finish voting on that resolution? Because I believe we were trying to get Ryan's vote, and then we may have been distracted.
Uh, well, who didn't vote, we'd had, we didn't have, so we're gonna circle Ryan as a non-vote. Uh, and Pete.
Pete is not here, and Michael.
So we did get a vote from Tamar, Bill. And Henry and myself.
All right, that's adequate.
So.
Cutting it close, but we made it.
Okay.
All right, well, if that is the vote on the resolution, then I can guide you in a motion, uh, to refer under two thirty-nine M. Um, having noted that the project is within five hundred feet of New York State Route twenty-two. Uh, and that site plan and special use permit is required, the planning board. Moves to refer it to Duchess County Planning pursuant to section two thirty-nine M of the general municipal law. You can just say so moved, and we will have our motion.
So moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
Henry. Okay, let's poll the members.
Mark.
Aye.
Henry.
Aye.
Bow.
Aye.
And Bill.
Aye.
Okay, the motion is passed, thank you, Patrick. Um. Let me make sure that was all. Site lock. Yep, okay. Right, Ron?
Awesome. Thank you, everyone, we'll be in touch, all right?
Wait.
So tomorrow, you're gonna get that in to us, or?
Uh, you wanna give me till the end of the week? Just to make sure, you know, the distance between my office and the town hall, it's a bit of a drive.
Just in case you need some sleep.
Exactly, yeah, I mean, one, two hours max, that's all I need.
Okay.
So Friday.
All right, that works.
It will be in Friday, Thursday, please.
Thursday works even better.
Thursday.
All right.
Refund drawings and you'll have that all sk- uh, straightened out with Lisa about the fee too.
All right, sounds good.
Okay.
Cool, thanks, everyone, have a good night.
You too, have a good night.
Night.
Yep.
So now we have the minutes of the June fifteenth, twenty twenty planning board meeting. Um. If everyone has had a chance to review them, is, does anyone have any changes or additions? I move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Uh, second, is that Bill?
Henry.
Henry, Henry seconded, and now we'll poll the members.
Val.
Aye.
Tamar.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
And Henry.
Aye.
Okay, thank. The minutes are approved. Now, we have to have a motion to adjourn. I make a motion, we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Second.
Second, Tamar. All those in favor are, I guess we poll the men, the members.
Tamar.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
Henry.
Aye.
And Val.
Aye. So the meeting is adjourned at eight eleven P M.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone.